But if we see, and I think you would agree with this, so if we see that there needs to be some investments in an area where we think is really important, right? We think we need to come to the community now, right? We need to come to the residents and say, and argue the case, right? So that may not be part of the fundamentals that you're talking about, because it's an investment we believe as the board, we need to make for the future of the organization. But the promise we're making, and yes, I know this is recorded in an archive, the promise we're making is when the, when these come, when it comes to these bigger ticket items, investments that we believe we need to make, we will come to the community and we will have that debate and we will listen to the input of the community. And I think that is a far better process than than perhaps what's happened in the past.
Thank you, Steve. Okay. Uh, looks like Steve Haynes also has a comment. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah. Buzz, I also agree very much that you've outlined the fundamental things that we're supposed, that we need to do. One of the most difficult thing, things in running an organization like this that you know, and and every, almost everybody here does know, is that there's a lot of back office stuff that you have to do right and do well in order to consistently provide an excellent product at a reasonable price. And most of that is invisible, it should be invisible to our customers. But because it's invisible, when it's not done well, it usually doesn't show up until there's some disaster, huge lawsuit, some collapse of of infrastructure, major collapse of infrastructure, or something bad in the financial management like embezzlement. And then everybody is absolutely correct in being furious about the fact that you didn't have the procedures in place to prevent those things, to manage them and avoid them. It's very difficult, and certainly in my experience, you don't get credit for avoiding a lawsuit. You don't get the the $5 million credit for avoiding a $5 million lawsuit. You you expect it not to happen. What's been found in my short time looking at this on the board is that the fundamental proceed, back office procedures necessary to avoid those disastrous problems are in need of repair. And and we're working very hard on that. It's gonna be, it's hard to see it in the short run. But the purpose of all of that is to get back to being able to provide a consistent, high-quality product at a reasonable price.
Thank you, Steve. Any other comment on that before we move on? Okay, Lori.
Kurt Hagman is up next.
Okay, Kurt. Lori is yours.
Hello, I'm Kurt. I'm the former treasurer, resigned a couple of weeks ago. I wanted to speak today in support of the SRA accounting integrity. There were comments made in the previous town halls. I didn't think I addressed them appropriately. There was, again, a question, or Buzz Abercrombie mentioned again today, that we tapped into reserves. And I want to dispel that understanding, because there was no tapping into reserves. And the accounting audit that will be done this year, I'm very confident will show that there was no tapping into any reserves. There was no transfer of any funds from the reserve account to the operating account while I was there. And and for all of the periods back that I looked at, I could not see any that were done that way. If there were funds that were transferred from the reserve account to the operating account without the members' approval, that is illegal. And there was no transfer of funds to the operating account from the reserve. And I guess the there's this feeling that somehow the conversation morphed, that there was, if there's a shortfall because of consultants, it should be in the operating account. And because that's where all of the expenditures for, sorry, for the consultant were were from the operating account. So if if we're short, we're short in the in the operating account, not in the reserve account. We're short in the reserve account because members approved the capital expenditures. There's no capital expenditures that are allowed, except those that are approved by the members. And the members approved the 2021 capital and the 2020 capital in the annual general meeting. There was no capital spent that wasn't approved by members. Now, we perhaps have not assessed enough of your dues for the reserve account. Because as people have mentioned, we do have aging infrastructure, and perhaps we haven't accounted enough for future costs. But I would also say that let's not be experts when we're not experts. We pay money for our reserve study. And the reserve study identifies how much we need to put into reserves. And now we're down to, by the end of 2021, if we spend what members approved, we will be only at 85% of fully funded. But as Joe mentioned, we're probably not going to spend the $65,000 to finish the upstairs of the SRA center or the landscaping. So we'll, we'll be above 85% fully funded. We were at 145% fully funded, so we've certainly drawn down from where we were, but we probably had more of members' money in our hands than what we should have had. Because we didn't need to have 145% of fully funded. I think we probably are going to have to have some dues increase for the reserve account. But maybe not for the operating account. But anyway, I just wanted to restore faith in the accounting systems, because you can question whether we spent the money on the right thing or the wrong thing, or whether we spent it and we didn't get value for it, but you should not question whether the accounting system is not accurate. The the system is accurate, and you should believe that. And the audit will prove it. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Kurt. Looks like Alex maybe has a comment.
I just, I just wanted to piggyback on what Kurt said, because he's absolutely right. The last authorized transfer of capital out of reserves was for the building. It was, I believe, $200,000. Again, prior to my being on the board. The cost of actually putting the building project together certainly ran over what it had been estimated to be when it was presented to the membership. But that 200,000, if I remember the number right, that was moved from capital was called, quote, "the building fund," end quote. I think what wasn't adequately described in the building project was that there were costs, and then there was financing. There are two components. So I don't, I don't remember the conversation about how the money was going to get moved out, but I haven't, I haven't seen any transfer of capital funds since, I don't remember when it was, 2017 or 18. And then I would also mention that there's been a rule change. And where reserves were shown as assets, they are now required to be shown as liabilities to the members. Thanks.
Lori, who do we have next in line?
Um, well, Greg Went has requested to speak also on the finances, and his wife has yielded five minutes to him. And then Kurt also has a follow-up statement.
Okay.
So.
And just out of curiosity, how many other people do we have in line? I just want to monitor, make sure everybody has a chance to speak, obviously.
Um, I have Paul Bessebinders and then April Hashimoto in line after.
Okay. We got, okay, we got plenty of time. I just want to make sure everybody has a chance to weigh in.
And give me a moment, because I have more than one. Greg here.
Oh. There we go. Go ahead, go ahead, Greg.
Am I, am I unmuted?
Oh, there we go.
There you go. Yeah, Greg Went, you're up.
All right. So let's, let's be clear on one thing. The the membership did not approve the 2021 budget. The board pulled RCW 90 dot 60 dot something and passed it when there was a actual two-thirds rejection of that budget. So let's not, let's be clear about that. To Kurt, in one of your past these past town halls, you cited a whole bunch of operational things such as repairs to gates, repairs to fountains. Those are not reserve items. Those are operational items that somehow got moved into the reserve fund. So, yes, in that budget, the board moved reserve funds or operational funds to reserve funds and back out in order to justify the costs. To Alex's comment about the building, for a number of years, the board authorized a building fund, and every year, a certain amount was put into that building fund, and that building fund was kept separate from both the operational fund and the reserve fund. So there was no co-mingling of funds for that. The membership authorized the use of those funds in 2017 in order to start to look to build a facility for the SRA, which we've now completed. Yes, there were overruns. There are always overruns. I could go into a litany of things about what occurred about that building. But be that as it may, those funds that there was $240,000, I think we had finally ended up with in that building fund, and that was completely separate from any reserve fund or any operational fund. Thank you.
Any other comments? And I guess my only comment on that, Greg, is there anything on a prospective basis? I mean, what I want us to do is looking forward, to be quite honest, in terms of any additional different steps which we should be addressing. That's the only question I'm going to put forward to the group. Let's look forward. Lori, next?
Um, Kurt had a comment as well on that subject.
Go ahead, Kurt.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, my understanding on the SRA Center, yes, it was overrun, but it isn't really the cause of why the reserves have fallen. Pardon me?
Thank you.
Can I go ahead?
Go ahead, Kurt. Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, with respect to the SRA Center, the the building costs roughly 1.1 million. We have a mortgage of $750,000. We transferred, as Greg mentioned, about $220,000 from the building fund that had been collected for many years. And that left about $130,000 that needed to come from somewhere. And this was a transfer of funds from operating, not from reserve and the other way. This was operating funds that were transferred to the building fund or to capital, which is perfectly legitimate, to build that building. So there was a a drawdown of operations funds of roughly $130,000 because of the overrun. But it did not, did not come from reserves. It came from operations. Oh, and one more thing. Sorry, I have one, my time's not quite up. I think I misspoke in the previous town halls when I said that we repaired some operators for the entry gates. I should have said replaced the operators for the entry gates. They're over 6,000, or they're roughly $6,000 to replace one of those operators. We replaced a fountain. The replacement fountain is, is over $4,000. So this was not operations or expenditures. These were capital expenditures to replace, not repair. So sorry if I misspoke in previous town halls.
Well, again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually move this along, and we can get into debate about some of the prior things, and some of that we can always take offline. It is important to have those discussions. I don't want to minimize any of that in that regard. But again, I really want us to look, looking forward, prospective basis, things we should be doing. Out of mine, Lori, who else do you have in mind?
Um, next is Paul Bessebinders. I have him unmuted. I don't see him.
I am unmuted. I'm right here.
The floor is yours.
All right. Thank you for the time. I was not planning on speaking, so I am, I'm woefully unprepared. And if I do talk any numbers and they're wrong, I apologize. I'm gonna hopefully, it's based on the issues, not on the numbers. And and if I do my job well, I'm, I'm gonna try to annoy virtually everybody on the call, no matter how, no matter how how you view things right now. The first thing I want to open with is I appreciate everything that the board, the current, Alec, I appreciate everything you have done. I actually believe it is one step above wrong. I believe it's shameful for the stuff that's out on the Nextdoor website. I completely ignore it, but I hear about it. I actually don't support what's going on with SRA votes. We are a community. We should act as a community. We should, we should do what we're doing in this forum. And it shouldn't be out on some public forum where people can say whatever they want behind the magic of the internet. So I I totally disagree with what's been going on out there, and I just want to make sure that you as the board know that. I'm also going to go on and say, full disclosure, I am not a joint partners fan. For various reasons, I'm not going to go into all the details on how they were contracted, whether there was approvals or not, but I'm not a joint partners fan. Anyone wants to pick my brain another day on it, I can go into glorious detail. But I I do want to bring up one point later, but I'm also just going to ask a quick question. I heard, and I'm not sure who it was that that mentioned this, one of the board members that said there's going to be, in the April 6 town hall, we're going to be talking about joint partners. What are we talking about with with regard to joint partners on April 6? My understanding is the contract was terminated. First question.
I'll turn that over.
Yeah, Paul, I'll take that. The Steve Geisels, I'll be leading that.
That's right.
It's really, the the conversation is going to be around the scope of work that was done. We've tried to handle that on these town, on the prior town halls. It's, it's really not an effective forum, town halls, to describe the scope of work that was done. There have been a lot of questions, Paul, about the scope of work. What was actually done? What did we actually pay for? So if if residents from the community want to hear about the full scope of work, the smaller focus group will allow us to have that conversation. That's really what that 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 particular focus group is about.
So but so for clarity, it is closeout related. Is that a fair statement?
Say that again, Paul, sorry?
For for clarity, it is closeout related in terms of the contract.
Yes, yes.
Okay, fair enough. That I, it it just threw me a curve, and I just wanted to understand that. So so I I don't want to revisit all of the past, but I I don't believe that that all of the issues that have been brought up, even going back before last annual meeting, have been, have been addressed. I know that my comments that I brought up since before the annual meeting have have certainly not been addressed. And and I think that's one of the problems is, is as a community, we want to be able to communicate with our board, and we want responsiveness from it, not just allow us time to talk, but to have meaningful discussion and meaningful output. So I think I'm going to make a rhetorical statement here. I think everyone on the board would agree that your primary job as board members is to represent the members of the SRA. Is is there anybody that disputes that? So if nobody disputes that, I'm going to move on. You know, we were all surprised in September when the joint partners contract was announced, when or or when it was discovered, and when we found out there was property transfer taxes in the, in the budget. And, you know, there was a whole lot of spending and a whole lot of speculative revenue that I think a lot of us didn't agree with. Now, a hastily organized meeting to talk through that, we actually had, I think, a couple of board meetings, special board meetings. And in fact, the property transfer tax was removed. So we removed a rather large speculative revenue item, but we kept all the costs associated with it. And the reason that we, that we were told to do that at that time is that we could not change the vote that was going to be happening on the budget. But in fact, if the budget was not approved, the joint partners contract would be terminated. And that was a provision in the joint partners contract. And I've actually spent a lot of time figuring out whether I'm just annoyed or mad about this, and I think it's a little bit of both. But here's the thing. And I, one of the previous gentlemen speaking, I think it was George, made mention of RCW 649525, the New Washington Uniform Code, Uniform Code, Interest and Ownership Act. I'm not going to make anybody raise their hands on this call, but how many, how many homeowners knew what the Washington Uniform Common Interest Ownership Act was? I would, I would venture to say 0% of the membership did. So what happened is the vote process and the way the votes were counted were dramatically changed by the act. And the act is law. I mean, we can't get around that. The act is law. My problem is not with the fact that the act is law. My problem is the fact that the members who were voting and and the board knew, joint partners knew, they knew we are up in arms about about the spending that was happening, the property transfer tax, a bunch of other things, and most notably, the joint partners contract. Joint partners stood to gain most by not disclosing this law change. It is law, no question about it. But joint partners stood to gain by having that budget pass by not disclosing to the membership that there was a substantial difference in how the votes were going to be counted based on the old law and the new law. I do believe that joint partners was in clear violation of the terms of their contract, because they did not support what the board was trying to do, and they did not support what the membership was rejecting. So I do believe that joint partners should actually be reviewed for whether they were honoring the terms of their contract, because clearly, if we had been voting under the old rules, the budget would have been shot down, and joint partners would not have been allowed. The fact that they remained silent and in turn, nothing was communicated to the members when there was a fundamental change in the way the voting process worked, I actually think that that falls on joint partner shoulders. You might say the board has some culpability there too. But first and foremost, I say it falls under joint partners, because they had the most to gain, and they had the most to lose if that, if that, if that measure passed or did not pass. So.
You're about right. You're a little over five minutes, so.
I know, and and I'm going to talk really quickly on the rest of it. What I'm going to basically say.
20 seconds. Now, I'm not trying to be.
Third, third, give me 30 seconds. I'll negotiate with you. Okay, thanks. I'm gonna, I'm gonna quote one of our great presidents, Ronald Reagan. Trust but verify going forward. None of you look like Russians, and and we aren't talking about nuclear warheads. But the one thing I'm asking, and I will ask it of the board members as I close out here, is I think the communication was lost, and the trust in the board was lost as a result of a lot of these things. I am asking if we can put some prudent controls in place with regard to when you must come to the membership to make large-scale investments. I'm not here to put a number on it. But would you as a board be supportive of putting logical controls on that? Somebody tried to put that forward last year, and it, and it was poorly worded. I will.
I'm gonna actually cut you off now. I think we have the question on the table.
Yeah, I would like, I would like to hear an answer to that question. Thank you.
I'll throw it back to anybody in the board who wants to respond. Thank you.
I have, I have one comment. You can check me on this, because I'm not totally sure, but I believe this is not October was not the first time that we operated under the WCOA rules with regard to the approval of budget or any other items on the slate of things to vote on at the last meeting. I I think we've used that rule in the past. Somebody else can check me on that.
I would like you to validate that, because I actually did some research. I don't have access to everything, and I found no evidence of that, Alec.
Well, let's, let's put that as a follow-up item then. Any other comments from the board and such? And and again, a lot of good dialogue here. I don't want to cut things off in when we have a good dialogue going, but want to make sure everybody has a chance to talk. Any other comments from the board?
Does anybody have, does anybody have a comment on the reasonable controls?
Okay, Joe?
May I speak?
Go ahead, Joe.
So Paul, thank you very much for bringing those forward, and this sounds like a broken record, but I've never met you before. But a few months ago, you just brought forward everything that I was complaining about, actually around the AGM. And one of the reasons I went on the board, as many people who are part of this call know, I was part of the original petition about spending money without getting approval from the residents. And I believe that I was misled when I vote, voted last year. I did vote against the budget, not that it makes a difference, but I was very disheartened when I went to the AGM and was told that the budget failed, or sorry, it passed, even though it failed. And the vote against incurring more debt also passed, even though it failed, even though two-thirds of the people who cared to vote in the community voted against both. So one of the reasons I ran was to make sure that going forward, that anytime there is a vote while I am on the board, and I'm going to say anytime, there is going to be full disclosure to residents about what it will take to either pass or fail in any of these things that you're voting for. Thank you.
Any other comments on that before we go to see who else is in line? Looks like Helen has a comment.
Thank you very much. Just, I counted it. The election committee counted it. And we checked with our, then with the person who was vice president, and Mike Hayden's a lawyer and knows the law very, very well and has for years. And when we got to the budget one, we called and said, Mike, give us the ruling. And the law states that the the measure is ratified unless it is rejected by 50% plus one of the entire assessable units.
Helen, I'm not disputing that, but it changed from previous years.
Go ahead, let Helen, let Helen.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, we followed the law. And nobody anticipated we'd be looking at something like that. On the other issue for the CCNRs, it states in the CCNRs, 66.66%, and it was 66.5. That's what happened. So just so you know, the rules were followed, and the rules, sometimes you lose, and sometimes.
So so this is a dialogue. May I respond? Because a town hall is a dialogue. I I accept the one on the capital, on the capital failed. And I, I did the math too, and I saw how little it failed by. And I do respect Helen that under the new law, and I think I said that very clearly, the new law governs. My, my problem is not with the new law. It is the lack of disclosure to the membership who believed they were voting under the old rules. Joint partners, I believe, had a fiduciary responsibility as a contracted partner of the board to make that disclosure, and the board then would have in turn had the, had the obligation representing the membership to let the members know that there was a fundamental change in how the membership votes are counted on a budget. Nobody did that, not the board and not joint partners. And I hold joint partners responsible. I believe they're culpable in that.
Alec, it sounds good. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Alec.
I have a, I have a question. Is is Buzz still here? I don't, I.
There's Buzz, yeah.
Buzz, I'm, I'm just inquiring as to whether you're aware of when we changed the CCNRs to be able to take advantage, so to speak, of. to be able to take advantage, so to speak, of WCOA or the new law. Uh, was that part of the C C N R changes that were done a few years ago or?
You can answer.
Yeah, that's my question.
Well, I I can't really answer that uh but Peggy Peggy Richter is here, and I'm sure that Peggy is in a much better position to answer that. But before I do, uh there is one other point that I'd like to make that that in my opinion is getting lost in this conversation. Whether what the rules are, I don't think anybody argues that the rules were followed and the law is the law and we have little obligation. Where my particular issue is is roughly, I don't know what the precise number was, but a slice of the membership voted on budget A and the next slice of the membership voted on budget B. Uh, and then to count everybody in the same pot and say it it was approved uh is is making a travesty out of the whole election process.
Agreed.
You should have voted on one budget that was clear to everybody on what it was that we were voting on. The rules are the rules, and I don't dispute that. But what is not clear to me, and I think to many members, is what the hell did we vote on? Now, if I can, if I can, Peggy to answer your question. I'm gonna mute mine.
Yeah, yeah.
Really bad feedback going for somebody.
It looks like the problem is with Peggy.
We'll 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 do it a different way. The tech- the technology is failing us here.
Yeah, it might be a little bit. I so I don't know if Peggy wants to respond or.
Peggy, I've unmuted you again. I it sounded like it was coming though from your computer.
I'll I'll just respond.
That's why you and Buzz are in the same room.
Okay. Oh, that's okay. That's probably why.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on the law. Uh, I've done some investigation on that.
Uh, actually, Dave, just a second. So it's Peggy. And then I'll come to you. Peggy, are you trying to get Peggy to speak? I just want to give her a chance if she's.
Yeah. No, can you hear me now? Is this better?
There you go.
Yeah, yes, we can. Go ahead.
No, when when we did the uh amended and restated C C N Rs in two thousand seventeen, all we did was um combine all thirty-five plus amendments, though we did not elect to go under the new law.
Put that on your lap, Mike.
It wasn't signed in twenty seventeen. I don't.
Right, the the twenty seventeen law only applied to to H O As that began after twenty eighteen. I think it was passed in twenty eighteen. And then in twenty nineteen, they passed a law that required the fifty-one percent of all the people in the organization vote thing that that we didn't. So technically uh we should have updated our bylaws and C C N Rs uh late twenty nineteen or something like that, or maybe in early twenty twenty. Uh, if if you want to do that, uh, I wrote a memo to uh Alicia Rules, who's our representative now. And she's, I asked her to investigate what's behind uh that particular ruling that was made and explain that I thought it was undemocratic, basically because how many votes do you take where people who don't vote count?
So, yeah, I I appreciate.
So anyway, that's an argument. But anyway, uh people can, you know, want to get in touch with Alicia and have her, you know, investigate that.
What what I'd suggest, it's seven thirty. Um, we could debate this all night long, and even I'm a CPA, getting lost in all the numbers and dates and everything here. What I would suggest is uh that there's some clarification here that we need to communicate to uh all the members. Let figure out a way to communicate that perspective basis so we don't run into this issue or concern about communication going forward would be my recommendation. Um, and so unless there's anything really that we can accomplish tonight on that, what I'd like to do is see if there's anybody else in line that wants to bring up any other issues we haven't talked about, uh recognizing it is seven thirty in the evening. Lori, do we have anybody else lined up for any new topics?
Um, Jim Simpson and.
Okay, uh Jim.
May take him a minute to get up here now.
We have some technology issues.
Okay, let's see here. Um, well, we'll try with Jim again in a moment. Um. April Hashimoto, you still wanted to speak again?
I just had a question. Uh, a question. It's not really a a big controversial topic. Um. Uh, I think Doug, I think.
Done this before.
I think Doug made a comment at the beginning that we were going to have a different format for this town hall. It was going to be more of a back and forth. And and it has been. My question for the board is, what about the members' forums at the board meetings where we've had the three minutes with the ringing of the bell and the thirty-second warning and then the board, and I think this is the key part, and then the board has no obligation to respond. So I think there's been some frustration in the community with the fact that when people do want to communicate something to the board or have a question that they attend the board meeting, they um have to prepare their comments within the three minutes. At the two and a half minute mark, you get interrupted by somebody saying, this is your thirty-second warning. And then there's a bell that rings at the three-minute mark, and then when you're done, somebody says, thank you for your comments. We're not going to be responding to you. So my question to the board is, is that going to carry on at the future board meetings? Or is and and this change is only for this town hall? Or is this change like apply to all the meetings that are going to be happening in the future?
Doug, I think I'll throw that one to you. Doug, you're on mute, I think.
Thanks, April, for the questions. Sorry about that. Um, uh, yeah, I think all of the board members have been frustrated at the inability uh that the rules we have to to really communicate back with the folks. And and I I think going forward, um, we're going to change those rules. Uh, how specifically we change those rules, I think there needs to be some real thought put into it. But I think that there's a desire on behalf of everybody on the board to be able to open that up and have those communications so that we can have more like this. The other thing we've committed to is doing quarterly town halls that will be much like this, and then these these focus groups. So there's going to be more, I think, more communication as we move forward. And talking to those big budget items, there's going to be very open communication about those types of things. And I think this board is very sensitive to what the community really feels. If we can't make a good case for something that we perceive is really important, then we're failing. So.
Thank you, Doug. Lori, any chance getting Jim back on or?
Yes, I believe that he's on now.
Okay, Jim, the floor.
Can't see my pretty face. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can. Great.
Okay, uh, hey, just want to say I'm new to the community. Um, everything's awesome, but um I just say what everybody was saying. I think, uh, you know, if there's a big spend, I think it needs to be communicated to the community, you know, whether it's set at a dollar amount or whatever. Is it fifty thousand, a hundred thousand or whatever, but it should be brought in front of the the community before um a a spend like that is made. So that's just all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Jim. Lori, do we have anybody else in?
Yes, Cindy Wilkie.
Okay, Sandy, the floor is yours.
Yes, my name is Cindy Wilkie, and I've lived here a year and a half now. And I don't know, I've been watching everything from just listening to everybody. And and I just, I guess I feel unrepresented and not taken consideration of when these discussions and things that are happening that are involving money that I work very hard for. I am not retired like I think a lot of you are. And I go to work every day. Meetings are held in the middle of the day. I can't get there. I work for a living, so I am not heard. Something that um I heard earlier. Um, people were talking about what um how much things cost to fix, the fountains, the gates, that kind of thing. Um, has it ever been considered that those are desires, not wants and needs? And that maybe they don't need to exist? I know everybody goes, oh, this is a gated community, but it has gates across roads. It's not fenced in. It's not a true gated community. I can get in any number of places without going through a gate. So are are they really needed? Is that fence really needed? Are the fences, those are still waters. I guess I should clarify. My master's in nursing is with a focus in public health. Still ponds create a big um breeding bed for mosquitoes. Are we spraying those ponds consistently through spring, summer, and fall? Um, who really, I mean, there there are these fountains all over the place. Um, what's the water expense? What's the electricity expense to maintain these? I I see, I guess maybe what I'm I'm driving towards is what are we doing towards environmental stewardship? Not just budget constraints, because it's quite obvious from listening to this that we're not quite there thinking about what needs are and and wants and desires need to be thought about. Do we really need them? Until where the budget is turned back around, which I don't know that it's ever going to be. But I hear these big thousands of dollars to fix something. The fence that I go in and out of at Saint Andrews Green Three, I just spent two weeks either not being able to get in or not being able to get out. And then the gates were wide open all the time. So they really don't perform what I think the function is supposed to be. So why do we have them? Um, I I just, you know, um, it it sounds with budgetary stuff. You need to start thinking about what the needs are and getting down to a more strict budget. That's about all I got to say.
And thank you for the comments, Sandy. Anybody in the board want to make any comment? Go ahead, Joe.
Uh, thank you very much for the comments, and I, Cindy, I'd like you to know that going forward, we will take into account needs versus wants and desires. Um, you know, there are some things that are going to be small and relatively trivial, and there are some things that are included in the C C N Rs and gates. You know, being new on the board, I don't know exactly what's necessary and what's not necessary. But it's going to be a high priority for me, together with uh the board right now, to identify items and put them into categories versus things we absolutely need, things that we don't absolutely need, and things that people want. And then we're in conjunction with uh what happened in the last couple of town halls when I wasn't on the board, which I think was very strategic. There is one, three, five-year plans in place. And what we need to do from a budgetary standpoint is try and identify things in the community. Never mind fifteen to twenty years like roads, which also need to be identified. But anything that we believe is a reserve account item, some operating types of things, et cetera, and see if we can bucket them and afford them. If we don't do that, we're going to be in trouble um in the not-too-distant future.
Where I work, I work at the hospital. You always work under a very tight budget. And if I have to cut my budget, I start looking at things that are desires, not wants and needs. And I, to me, those are them. They may be small-budget items, but water is expensive. Electricity is expensive. We waste water around here. I watch lawns being watered, the automatic sprinklers and stuff. We're watering the street and the driveways as much as we are the grass.
Sandy, I I appreciate it. I think I think you've made your point, and not to not to cut you off, I think it's made the point.
Yep.
Yeah, appreciate it. Okay. Okay, um, we are.
Could I just make a quick comment to Cindy?
Oh, sure.
She was asking about environmental stewardship. Um, that's part of my language. Uh, but and there is a a committee of the board which is specifically addressing that. Um, I know Jennifer Plumbon just went on it, and she's a real crusader. So that is one of the top issues. And yeah, how we all deal with climate change and water, et cetera. Those are big things, and they're big issues, and that committee is working on it. I wish you had the time you could be involved. Maybe maybe they could do it another time. But anyway, I just want you to know that's front and center.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The problem with a lot of these committees is they work, they they meet during the day and.
I appreciate that. I'm I I work full-time too. I I fully appreciate that.
Okay.
Something for the committees to think about. I mean, I don't want to cut you off. Something for the committee to think about, absolutely.
Russ, just one one sh- short comment.
Yeah.
Uh, Cindy, uh, we appreciate your concern in in everything that you've mentioned. Uh, if you have some specific questions or uh what I would maybe what can suggest you do is set up an appointment with Debbie Smith at our uh A S C. Uh, she's our executive director, and sit down and and just set set a half an hour or an hour aside and talk about those, and she can talk directly to some of the things that the maintenance team is doing and and all of the concerns that you might have. I think you'll find a lot of those answers there.
Okay.
Okay, Ted Metz is up next, and then Kurt Hagman.
Okay, and what I'm going to suggest at this point in time, we probably have time, and I may not have time for five minutes for each, so go ahead and do that, and then I'm going to want to give those a little bit of time for Doug to wrap up. I did tell you, we would end no later than eight o'clock, so.
Hi, this, I'm Ted Metz, and I was on the board for four years, and I was head of the maintenance committee for four years. And I wanted to point out that those ponds and fountains aren't there just for looks. They they serve as a specific purpose in runoff that uh and we have the fountains there to aerate in order to keep control of those ponds and minimize the overgrowth in those ponds. The second part is about replacing those uh, as it was called, fountains. In the past, our former director of maintenance took them out and repaired them himself. And now with the change in through the partners bringing in a new maintenance manager, that's not happening, and that's unfortunate. As well as, I haven't seen the sweeper in the neighborhood for some time. And Alec, you remember as well as anybody that if you don't use the ma- uh the sweeper, it deteriorates because it must be used. So if we want to cut costs, we need to get people that can maintain products without having to send them out for contracting to be done. That's it. Thank you.
Board having a comment or anything on that? Okay, go ahead, Doug.
I'll just um a comment about the sweeper, Ted. Uh, i- i- and that is that the uh uh, the only person that was licensed to run that was uh Justin. And with his departure, there was no one on his team uh that had been trained or had the right licensing to drive the sweeper. Now, there is an initiative in place to get uh several of the guys, a couple of the guys actually licensed, putting them through the the licensing process, and that's going to take another probably sixty days. Uh, it's my question to Bruce at maintenance yesterday was, um, why haven't the sweet streets been swept? He said that they were just finalizing in agreement with a uh a vendor that will come in and actually do those. So uh that is, that is the reason why, yeah, you haven't seen the sweeper around.
Okay, unfortunately, that's more money.
Yeah. Um, did Kurt have a last comment to make, and then I think I'm going to pretty much turn it back over to Doug to close, but Kurt, did you have one more comment?
Uh, yeah, I I just wanted to voice my concern that the board doesn't overreact uh to uh falling finances, that it it sounds like from some of the comments made today that we shouldn't have gates, uh, we shouldn't have street lighting. that we shouldn't have gates, we shouldn't have street lighting, we shouldn't have fountains. That's not the community I moved to here. And the vision that the board came up with to be the premier residential resort community in the Northwest would not be served by eliminating those amenities. So I just wanted to make the comment that just be careful you don't overreact to the concerns about the finances being somewhat less than they were two years ago. That's all I have.
Lori, do we have anybody else in, in line?
Joe Selfie has requests to make a comment.
Okay, go ahead, Joe.
I know it's going to turn over to Doug in a second. And what I'd like to say to all of the people who are left, and I know about 25 to 30 have left the meeting so far who were in attendance. Thank you very much for coming out. Thank you very much for asking questions. I am hoping that we as a board are going to be able to listen to what you have to say as we move forward and hopefully listen effectively and involve you with decisions that will be made on behalf of all of us. And just as a last parting comment, I know it was mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, and I'd like to remind again, there are going to be some focus groups in specific areas. The first one coming up is on Saturday at 3 o'clock, and it's about finances. It could be about budgets. It could be about anything involving money and how it's being spent. And so if any of you are interested in being there, it's at 3 o'clock in the back room of the Great Blue Heron Grill, which is called the Palmer Room. We are limited to 50 people because of COVID doors, spatial limitations, and it's going to be in-person. I want to be able to speak frankly. I don't know. Oh, sorry. I don't know if I'm going to be able to field, field or answer all questions, but I will do the best that I can. And if I can't answer them, then I will promise to get back to you with some soon after. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank, thank you, Joe. So I am going to wrap up with my own one or two comments and for to, to Doug to wrap up the meeting. I, I do hope everybody found this format to be useful, truly an open forum. I hope everybody wanted to speak, had a chance to speak. You know, please do share with the board any thoughts going forward on this type of communication and such. And then my only request is something that was commented on earlier. As an independent person, again, there's always aspects to every debate that we go through. And I really believe in taking all comments in heart. I do believe this is the right kind of forum. I think the upcoming forums that are listed here on the screen is the right way. I will echo, I don't believe social media, I don't think things that are open out on the internet is the way to have an open dialogue and respect our members and respect the people that we all mean a lot to us. So everybody that I've heard today is a friend of mine that I know, and I hope you believe that sincerely. So with that in mind, I'm going to turn it over to Doug to wrap up the meeting.
Can I ask, this is Paul. Can I ask a quick question with regard to the meeting on Saturday?
Oh, please go ahead, absolutely.
Yeah, so it's an in-person meeting. My wife and I are sitting in sunny Arizona rather than in Washington. Is there any provision for remote participation, or how can we provide input? So I'm going to answer it this way, Paul. And so the one thing I'd like to do is have the first meeting as in-person. And if we are to include audio, audio visual, call it Zoom, call it whatever you want. The one thing I find frustrating, and I know other people in the community find frustrating, is we have technical issues. I don't, I'm not positive how we're going to get around having people on the floor talk and then having it zoomed in with microphones all over the place. But perhaps, and I hope, what you might be able to do is be involved in the second one, which will probably be a Zoom one on Monday, the 12th in the evening. I, I know that that doesn't maybe meet what you're hoping for, but I'm hoping, I'd like to do as much in-person stuff as possible, not excluding. But I am planning to do the second one in a Zoom format, even if it's in-person. Sure. If, if, if you could, if we could ask a favor, are you able to record that meeting? That way we'd have an opportunity to review and maybe provide input. So by recording, is an audio recording okay? Sure. Because. I've seen enough of your face already. I'm just kidding. No, you're right. And that's why you're on a blank screen. So what I'd like to do is from that recording is take questions and answers, not if it's going to take an hour and a half. It's not going to take an hour and a half to read, but in condensed format, that would be my goal. And to have it available before the second meeting would also be my goal. Sure. Okay, thank you.
Sounds good. I think on that, Doug, I think it's over to you to close this out.
Well, first of all, I want to echo the comments that Joe made. Thank you all for your attendance. I, I hope that you get the sense that the board really wants to move forward with the kind of communication. Excuse me?
I think somebody needs to mute. Go ahead.
Okay. So I, I hope that the board or that the community really understands that the board really wants to move forward and have open, solid communication. The board, I think, is, is very dedicated to making sure that we're representing the community. It's, it's all our community. I think we all have the same visions. We want that to happen. Our, our, the focus groups that are lined up are, are available. They'll be on the web. They'll be, I think, I don't know exactly how they're going to be transmitted out, but we'll make sure that they're available. And, and the last thing I want to do is I want to thank the Communications Committee. Helen put a lot of time in bringing this all together. I know that all of our directors are working on getting up to date with a lot of the information and a lot of the detail and putting time in for preparing for these, these meetings, these focus groups. So I want to really thank the Communications Committee. They did a great job. They're doing a great job. Thank you, Lori, for your work tonight. Alec, thank you very, from the bottom of our hearts for the work that you've done. You'll always be a friend. And with that, I think we'll say goodnight.
Goodnight.
I know.